Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming tonight. I would like to invite Pastor Peter O'Gorman from the Belgrade Lindstram Catholic Parish to open with a prayer.
Thank you. At times of injustice we've got to put forth, and I was saying it, you know, couldn't all be in right to go over, but then thinking about time, the one thing we're equally, and it's the only failure of our forecome, people say, put another day in the week. But we had to make time, there's something we all have, and we're all equally in 20 four hours a day. How we use it is something that varies from one person to the other. So in our prayer, I'd like to pray to our God that we accept the gift of time, we accept the gift of daylight and dark, except particularly the time that we're able to use for the benefit of others. We pray that we will take time to work for the welfare of others by our outreach to them, by our consideration for them, not taking by their need all the time. Rather think about the good things around us, the good people, the beauties of nature, and the wonderful opportunities to give up that we're given. So we pray that we're equally in time, that we also strive to be equal in the way we use it for the benefit of others, and pray that more people can use it.
Okay. Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of land on which we're meeting tonight, and pay respects to the elders past and present. I'd also like to advise everyone present that the meeting is recorded audio visually, and will be available on the Cranston Council website later this week. I declare the meeting open, a note and apology from Alderman Cusick. Item two, confirmation of minutes for 27th of February, as circulated, be taken as ready to confirm. Alderman Cusick, second of Alderman Cusick. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Nothing to report at item three. Item four, the council notes the workshops conducted on the 6th and 14th of March, and the agenda brief on the 17th of March. Thank you, Alderman Chong, Alderman Curly, thank you. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest, Alderman or closest station? There being none. Item six, there are no petitions on the agenda, are there any petitions to table? Item seven, it's public question time, there are no matters on notice, are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Thank you. Item eight is deputations by members of the public, general manager.
Mr Mayor, we have one speaker this evening, Jan Dawes of Montague Bay, who wishes to address council in relation to the fitness in the park programme. If you can come forward, please.
I do need to point out that, I do need to point out that under meeting breaks, we only can allow three minutes, and there'll be a tone of two and a half to ring up. There'll be a tone of two and a half minutes to give you an opportunity to wind up.
Well, each year, many of the people who attend Fitness in the Park email or write to our council thanking you for this great programme. Each year, we thought that we would personally thank you all for maintaining this relatively unique programme for your citizens. At the wellness conference you hosted in November for other Tasmanian councils, I was proud to represent our participants and sing the praises of the fitness in the park. We have noted that recently the Hobart City Council is filing a similar programme, proving the current city council is the trendsetter. This fantastic programme has been in operation for the past eight years, and in 2013 it was offered to beginners and older women. I turned up on the first morning session to find five other women, plus a trainer, ready to exercise. The good news spread quickly, and our numbers have continued to increase. Just some data for you, 50 to 60 individuals participating in the morning fitness sessions, and many of us attend more than one session per week. Approximately 65% are on a low income, which includes pensions, part-time work, or a self-timer retirement plan. At least 85% of our participants are over the age of 50, and nearly 30% of us live alone. As you can understand from these stats, expensive gym membership, or personal trainers are out of reach for the majority of our participants. And I'm sure that you were also aware that due to the average age of the participants, various health issues are prone. Fitness in the park has already had a positive influence on our fitness level, weight, and mental health. And for this alliance, we are exceptionally grateful for this programme. We have also benefited socially, making new friends, and having a great laugh in a supportive atmosphere. It has especially enabled those of us who live alone, a point of reference in creating wider social networks. Exercising in the fresh air among our beautiful surrounding environment is a delight, and it also gives us our vitamin D dose for the day. My personal journey, this joining of fitness in the park, has been one of the significantly improved levels of fitness, both physically and mentally. For several years, I've been taking it as a presence, and two years ago, I felt well enough to stop taking this meditation. I'm sure that the legal group exercising has enabled this to happen. Many other members of the group have various personal stories of benefits of this programme. And for instance, one of our participants moved from his estate five months ago, and googled the town city council to see what activities were available in this area, that she, where she could make friends. And fitness in the park suited her really well. We feel very fortunate to have a council who is so far cited that it sees its personal fitness as a way of preventing medicine, as a preventive medicine for its citizens. So on behalf of the participants of fitness in the park, I'd like to thank you all for providing this tremendous programme, and look forward to being able to continue taking the advice and expertise of the trainers, the employees of this outstanding fitness programme for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The council meeting is not an opportunity for pause, or for any favor, or any like that. Everyone's got the beavertalk with our fear or favour on both sides of the argument, and so that sort of disruption is definitely not conducive to that taking place. So I would please ask you to respect the dignity of the chamber. Item nine is motions on notice, item 9.1, Alderman Cusick. Do we have a second, please? Alderman Campbell, thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Why now? I believe we've had enough time, data, and information to now make a decision on this particular matter. Some might say, wait. We have received all the data and information from the consultant SGS, had the opportunity, the opportunity of numerous briefings, and had a final briefing from SGS two weeks ago, having had the report for several weeks prior to that. It might be said we haven't had a summary report from the general manager. With due respect to the general manager, we already have all the information, we ought to be able to make up our own. It might also be argued we should consult with the residents of Clarence. I fully respect their intellectual capacity, but what do we make available? The SGS report, the UTS report, which in key aspects contradicts the SGS report. The SGS report is that tech, the UTS that tech. Reports, these reports are full of data, statistics, graphs, tables, and we expect our residents, and to expect our residents, to read, to absorb, and then to analyse and come up with an answer. That's just on the one report, and then repeat it on the other, which as I said is often contradictory, all this without any opportunity for in-depth briefing we have received. I believe it would be an unreal expectation. We are elected to make, to make such decisions, let's do so. Why do I say no merger? The $390 million economic benefit over 20 years, which is identified in the report, let's look at that. $10 million financial loss, which the report says may lead to increased rates, and I applaud. The merger didn't, the financial modelling backed by experience of recent mergers elsewhere in Australia suggests net costs of merger for options two and four to amalgamation, which will result in increased costs which may require rates increases if no assistance is received from the state government. Infrastructure transport gain of $274 million. 70% of the total economic gain is through transport infrastructure improvement. Merging four councils in itself will not achieve this. The strategic alliance I'm proposing has as much chance of achieving this gain. Also, $68 million tourism yield, so $340 million of the $390 million is achieved from transport and tourism improvement. If these can be achieved by a merger, they can be achieved by a strategic alliance. Part of the transport gain, the report says, is more centralised employment. Is that what we want? We want to move employment out of our local areas into the city. Of course, the only merger option based on the report is the four council merger. It's a three council merger, Hogo, Lenorki, Clarence, ranks behind the strategic alliance in the SGS report. It is stated to be a better option than the three council merger. Representation would drop at least a half, let's say, four, say four councils, for instance, 20 councillors are Alderman, that's five each, down to 12. Probably, so that's a reduction of more than 50%, and only one quarter of the representation that we have when we have total management of this council. For the benefits of the residents of Clarence, on the evidence of this report, I believe pursuing the option of strategic alliance provides by far the best outcome for Clarence, its residents, and its rate payers.
Well, I believe that Alderman Cusick's outlined the whole situation very well. We have been through this time, and time again, we've spent a lot of time on it. It's diverting council's attention from its real core business, and that we have the reports, it's time to make a decision, to make a decision on that.
Thank you, Mr Campbell.
Thank you, Mr Beck. Clarence is in a unique position in this whole debate, being involved in two potential amalgamations. Greater Hobart on one side, some combination of Clarence, Hobart, the North East and Tlingara; Greater South East on the other, Clarence against Sorrel, Tasm, Penet and Northern Spring Bay. We've received, as Alderman Cusick has said, extensive reports on both, but are still waiting on some analysis that we, that we as a council requested to verify some of the underlying assumptions that have been made in the reports. To my mind, it's very premature to consider one report in isolation. To do the best for our rate payers, we must consider all the options before we recommend anything for our community. And despite the comment earlier, I do not believe that the community will not want to have a say in this. I think this is the most important decision that we as a council and our community will make in a very long time, and I think that the community will want to have their say, and they can only have their say if we give them the best information possible. Making a decision just off on the report is not doing the best information possible, and I am not the judge in this.
Alderman Walker. Look, this motion is not well canvassed, and whilst I support every Alderman's right to take or table a notice of motion, I can't support the process surrounding this one, and the effect of making a decision on one study in isolation of the other. As a point of agreement with Alderman Cusick, the financials don't stack up with the SGS report, but this motion is written about stopping one way forward, and not really going about the best way forward. And we're getting hints towards a strategic alliance, but not actually naming up what that might be. And, you know, I'll only say it once, but I've talked about contract city councils for a very long time, and that is not part of the strategic alliance mix, and that is probably a good record. So this is about ruling one thing out, but not actually talking about other things and bringing the best thing forward. And the other thing is that this notice of motion deflates our council's prestige in the investigation process which started over two years ago. Clarence started out with a, with a, with our prejudice approach. We didn't intuitively think something made sense or not, we said, we'll talk to any surrounding neighbouring councils who want to, and we'll see how it goes. And that's how we ended up being involved in two studies. And, you know, we took a whole day offline to do strategic planning around the principles for the studies, and around the processes, and I think that made a robust template for both studies, and something that was utilised by all councils. In fact, we even deferred, considering that 2000, in the end of 2015, the KPMG report, because that wasn't robust enough, and we needed them to firm up some of the things they were going to look into. And you want to talk about studies? Well, as far as the SGS one goes, we were the only council with Alderman that went along as observers to those steering committee meetings. And, you know, I think on the KPMG side, some people from other councils came along once as observers, but we did that, because the seriousness and gravity of this matter deserved, you know, thorough in consideration at every point along. Now, my understatement of the year would be that I was underwhelmed with the shortlisting process for the consultants, and that I was disgruntled around the selection process of that shortlist. But it has been a very long process, which makes it all the more essential that we deliberate in a thorough and considered fashion. Now, we might as a council understand that the SGS report shows that this thing doesn't stack up on financials, but that point I don't think has been completely understood by the fourth estate to this date, and I suspect by the general community either. And the other thing about this notice of motion, it is absolutely devoid of any response towards the minister's guiding principles, and that's something that I think is really quite important. It really does smack a decision-making on the run. And if I would say, there are any South Park watchers in the gallery, that this is the Eric Cartman approach to coming to a decision, and I'll paraphrase, I don't want to use the exact catchphrase, but basically it's, spew you guys, I'm going home. Look, I am going to finish this up now with one key point that we really need to think about, and that is to say that it is absolute bonkum to say that the KPMG report and SGS report are separate issues and should be considered separately. They are not. They are completely intertwined because they are about reform, and we need to go out with a considered decision on both of those, and a coherence message, because if we just do one little bit in isolation and come back to another, we're not going to get the best outcome, and we're certainly not going to be able to explain it well. So I won't be supporting this at this time.
Alderman Gonderto.
Mayor, I wish to put the procedural motion that the matter be deferred until a future council meeting, where council considers in the governance section of the agenda both the SGS, Greater Hobart Local Government Reform Final Feasibility Report, and the KPMG, South East Council's feasibility study on the report.
Have a second for that procedural motion, Alderman James.
Being a procedural motion, there's no debate, so I'll put the motion which is that this matter be deferred to further, to a further meeting in accordance with the motion. Do you have the words to that there? Matter be deferred until a future council meeting where council considers in governance section of the agenda both reports, et cetera. So all those in favour? Against? Motion is carried, and matter is deferred.
Item 10, item 10.1, reports from single and joint authorities. Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, notwithstanding the agenda, there are no reports outstanding for STCA. Copying refuse disposal site joint authority, Alderman Campbell. Report be received. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Any discussion on the copying report? Those in favour? Carried unanimously. Southern Waste Strategy Authority, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There is a note here that the quarterly report is pending, that's the September quarterly report. I would like to report to council that I had a discussion with David Sales last week, who was the CEO of Southern Waste Strategy up to the date we decided to dissolve, well, move to have it dissolved. And I have been advised that parent city council will receive in the order of about $6,000 or thereabouts, as part of the distribution of the surplus funds of the authority, and that money, these funds, will be forwarded to council in the next week or two. The other matter in relation to quarterly reports, I know we've raised this before, or have raised this before, but as soon as I'm able to get some information from David Sales and the chair of the ex-sua, that I can then table that at council with regard to no further reports that will be required, and hopefully we'll have a report from the Southern Waste Strategy Authority from that point on. So at the moment, we're in abeyance, and until I have further information, I'll advise council according.
Guard to Tasmanian Water Corporation, notwithstanding all the hype and rhetoric in the media, councils are still waiting for further information from the government, and we expect to hear that from the minister on the 7th of April at the Elgat General Meeting in Nonsystem. Have you take question, Alderman James?
There's been a lot of discussion in the media in relation to whether or not the time that has been proposed by Tas Water for the, I suppose, to provide the fresh drinking water for those towns and villages in Tasmania, and so on, that obviously do not have fresh drinking water. And there's been a response from the state government that by taking over Tas Water, they can in fact speed up the process. Is there any update on that? I know there's been a number of media releases that have been forwarded, and there's always been a response from the government liaison officer in response to those. In your capacity as president of Elgat, are you able to provide the council with any update on as to whether or not it's good, bad, or indifferent in relation to the timeframe for potable water, and fresh water to those villages and towns in Tasmania?
Thank you, Alderman James. I'd like to answer that in regard to being parent's council's representative, on the on its representative for Tas Water, and I can advise that the corporation will have all boiled water and do not consume alerts removed before the projected takeover date by the state government. That is July next year, that all the water problems will have been fixed.
Item 10.2, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. Are there any reports? Alderman Chong.
I'd like to table the minutes of the January meeting of the Richmond Advisory Committee and the Harrow Community Centre.
Alderman Gonderto, I think was next.
Table the minutes of the Richmond Steering Committee for the 16th of January, which have been confirmed by council.
Alderman Curly.
The Belgrade Community Arts Centre Annual General Meeting and the General Meeting of the 8th of March.
Other reports, Alderman James. Just a report in relation to the formal opening of the Kangaroo Bay Ribbulet Walking Track. That'll be this Wednesday, and I suggest everybody put on their boot, their walking boots, because we're leaving from the integrated health centre, and we're going to trek through the city, down to Gordon's Hill Road, and then we're having a little bit of a function, is that right, Mr General Manager, at the barn, and the mayor will be saying a few words, and his chair at the tracks and trust is obviously saying a few words as well. So everybody's welcome. It's a great event. The community have been after this for many years, and it's finally, this council has done and delivered. So.
Thank you, Alderman James. Any other reports? Item 11, 11.1, the information in the weekly briefing reports of the 27th of February, 6th and 13th of March, we noted. Thanks, Alderman Cusick, second of Alderman Cusick. Any questions on the weekly briefing reports? There being none, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Item 11.2, there are no petitions to deal with, so council now intends to set as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Prohibls Act. Item 11.3.1, there's a development application, lot 39 Taloon Street, in this farm. Thank you, Alderman Cusick. Alderman Palmer, speakers.
Hey, Mr Mayor, this is 550 square metre lot of vacant land in a very desirable location. All the representation issues have been addressed by officers, so I recommend approval.
Alderman Palmer.
Alderman James. A question through you to Mr Love, or Mr Mayor. On page 28, it refers to the 10.4.601, privacy for all dwellings. The acceptable solutions goes in detail, of course, about the balcony deck, group terrace, and that the, has a finished surface of floor level more than one metre above natural ground level. And also to the side boundary and less balcony deck group, has a setback of at least three metres from the side boundary. There's non-compliance with regard to that, but Mr Love will explain in, as to why under performance criteria, they have come up with their decision, the officers, to recommend this approval, given that the setback on page 28 is non-compliance.
Mr Mayor, so we're going to address that, as you were doing. The setback in question relates to the joint, what we're looking at, the separation issue that we have. Alderman Cusick. The motion which is recommending approval, subject to conditions and rights, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 7.3.2, subdivision application at 352 Jellibrand Drive, Sanford, for a three lot subdivision. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Second of Alderman Chong, would you like to speak to it?
Thank you, Mayor. There were three representations, one was vehicle access, which I think in the comments the council engineer has set proposal, and has been conditioned, so I think that's quite a, quite a good result there. And the other one was public open space. Now, I'm just more interested in public open space by what the objectists said in the comments by our staff, and I actually totally agree with the comments of our staff, I think it's a much better outcome.
Well, yeah, his recommendation.
Alderman Curly, please. Put motion for approval, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.3, there's a subdivision application, 128 and 130 Tremere Road, area for two lot subdivision. Alderman Palmer, thank you. Alderman Cusick, speakers.
Just to support the officer's recommendation, it's a good infill area, excellent outcome for our local residents.
Thank you, Alderman James. There were nine representatives in relation to this, and the officers have gone through, as they would normally do, to address these comments. There is a number of matters that have been raised by the object representatives, and I, and I would like just to address a couple of those matters. First of all, the adverse impact upon privacy and the overshadowing. Now, the overshadowing matter is, as far as the acceptable solutions is concerned, it does not need it, and then under the performance criteria, it goes through a number of aspects of the performance criteria to try to address it. Even so... Even so, under fee on page 72, there's insufficient width between two existing dwellings on the lots to construct a new road to provide access to the rear of the lots. Now, I suppose the only reason that the performance criteria is being, is sort of clarifying the matter is that it's, it is not reasonably possible to provide a new road to create a standard frontage lot. So perhaps if I could direct my question through you to Mr. Lovell, in his capacity as a city planner. And Mr. Lovell, given that the performance criteria states, I'm just using one example here on page 72B, that the lot constitutes the only reasonable way to subdivide the rear lot of an existing lot. How is it then that the comment that's been made substantiates that for the offices to at least give a tick in the box?
It's very, very easy to make a future loss to, it's very impossible to provide. So in this case, I was looking at two, it's almost an idea, access to some lots in the middle as well as a new road, given the situation which is, we're.
It says that the lot constitutes the only reasonable way to subdivide the rear of the existing lot. So regardless of whether we have a road there or not, why is it possible to be able to say that it's, that under performance criteria, it's not, it's not possible? And then in the comment column, it's insufficient width between that to construct a new road. So you're gonna, you can't construct a new road if it hasn't got the width to get to it.
It's, yes, we do not want a new road. And therefore, the impossible solution, this is great internal, it's about max shape access.
The others, speakers? Rodri Poy?
Just to answer that question, this is a right of way that will be getting put in place with a total width of four point metres wide, which we sit from right away over it. And that is in excess of the minimum requirement for a right of way, which is 3.6. So basically, it's just a driveway. This area is, will be looked at in fine detail by a lot of local developments and plans upended as a prime area for infill in the future. I think that this is an indication, this particular application is a clear indication of where that's going over.
Recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? Very. 11.3.4 is a development application, 34 Oakbank Road, a target for a dwelling. Thanks, Alderman Cusick. Second to Alderman Farley, would you like to speak to it, Alderman Cusick?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, a large lot, 4,800 square metres, one representation relating to storm water, which has been answered and addressed by the offices.
Another prime development area for lots finding with the new statewide planning scheme, we will be seeing a lot of these coming down.
No need for Rodri Poy there. Motion is recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Very unanimously. And that concludes our business to the planning authority. Thank you. There's nothing under customer service, asset management, financial management. 11.7 governance, 11.7.1, this is draft dog control amendment. Alderman Campbell, moved. Second to Alderman McFarlane, thank you. Speakers? Alderman McFarlane, would you like to speak a second? Alderman James?
Look, I just would like to seek some advice in relation to the Clarence Infrom Planning Scheme provisions and the Dog Control Act in relation to the number of dogs that can now be kept in a suburban environment as distinct from the old scheme, which of the council's prior planning scheme, there were some wealth policies and there was some limitation on the number of dogs that could be. So my question through you to Mr. Tui, I think in his capacity, is the officer responsible. Mr. Tui, is there any overlap in relation to the amendments, the Dog Control Act? And also to what constitutes a kennel licence or the number of dogs that can be kept in suburbia under Clarence's Infrom Planning Scheme provisions?
Freedom, Mayor. Hunting scheme would only become relevant to a boarding carriage head on board on a mother's nursery operation.
Just to clarify then, this amendment's not going to change those provisions, what? Thank you. Any other speakers? Would Rodri Poy, Alderman Campbell? Put the motion which is that we note the draft bill in forward the report. All those in favour? Very unanimously. Item 11.7.2, a visit to Binjau City. That recommendation notes the makeup of the group and the timing of the delegation. Thank you, Alderman McFarlane. Do we have a second, please? Alderman Farley, thank you. Would you like to speak to it, Alderman McFarlane?
I'll just briefly. I believe this is an important step in the direction to looking forward to working with the Binjau City and further our relationship with them in the future. We have for a long time been looking at different city relationships or business interaction and this will initiate the discussion. And I look forward to the upcoming reports from fellow aldermen who are attending on the. Mr. Mayor, behind the scenes, we've discussed this quite intensively and we all supported the visit. And I noticed that in 2013, our report noted that any future city friendship, relationship should be focused on China, including China and Southeast Asia area. So this is the, something coming together after years of actually trying to get something together. So it fits in well with where our current economic future is as well. So we have a lot to learn. Thank you.
Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask to correct this. Do not, do not support this trip to China and hate the comment, and I make it again, that one of the matters that will be discussed with Chandong, which is the investment company that's working with Hunter Developments to build the new hotel and the Cape Training Centre, Kangaroo Bay, will be, I believe, discussed at this meeting with the, at the Binjau City. The timing of this is inappropriate. We only dealt with the Kangaroo Bay and the Cape Education Facility earlier this year. And prior to that, there was an invitation extended to this council for council delegation to visit the city. And that came from Binjau and it was done in conjunction, I understand, with Chandong. So the impression that it can convey to the public is that council is accepting an invitation and it was, invitation was issued before council made a decision on the development application of Kangaroo Bay. At the time, the invitation, council didn't respond to the invitation, said, look, at this stage, we're not, not able to send a delegation because the matter is still before the council. So after the matter was dealt by council, then council decided to send a delegation to Binjau and a number of persons, their names obviously were drawn, were obviously considered. And this recommendation is for the official delegation to be comprised of those persons listed there. And also to, there was an invitation extended to other members to go in the delegation, but at their own expense. The question of the payment of this four to five official delegates is about 3,500 each. And that does specifically come out of, out of council ratepayers' monies. There is allocation that's provided to aldermen to use for training and education purposes. But in this instance, the delegation or the official delegation fees, travel expenses will be paid out of not their own specific, what we call allocation for travel or allocation to attend a training session. So look, at the end of the day, it's too soon. It's not sending a very good message to the community that we are going to send a delegation of six, well, at least the mayor and three other aldermen as the official delegation and three other aldermen, in total, in six. And the discussion that will occur over there may be in relation to Chandong and also to, there may be some discussion within this memorandum of understanding, which will be signed by the mayor and vice president, if I understand. Could entail, I'm not saying it would, but could entail discussion revolving around the 840,000 shortfall in car parking. And that's the cash in lieu that the company is required to spend in relation to a deficit in the car parking. Now, there could be a discussion about that. And I think that if there was a discussion about that, it would be most inopportune, given that there is still some.
Alderman James, I think you're speculating a bit here. Are there any other speakers? Alderman Dows?
Mr. Mayor, I think this delegation, being due is essential. You know, when you're dealing with Asian culture, you've really got to start off on a social basis. It's not like in Western world where you're going and you make a deal and someone's gone. You've got to build up trust, you've got to build up social responsibility. Rap rap poor, they look at your families, they look at your hobbies, they look at all these things. We think, we discuss them, they're nothing but, it's very important for these people to build up. And I think this is the next one time to go over there, to start on or continue on with what is going down in Kangaroo Bay. So I'm sorry to be issued, that's, that's a done deal. And the fact that Alderman Farley, Pierce and who are wanting to go at their own expense to reinforce those already there, it only adds to the status of this council that we are so interested in and we respect them. And that's a big, big factor. It's called give respect. If you read up on Chinese culture, you've got to give respect. If you don't give respect, they won't give back respect back to you. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity and I really admire those people who are willing to go there on their own expense to reinforce this concept of give respect.
Other speakers? Alderman Chong?
I guess just very briefly, because obviously a number of us have done some research looking at Binjau, we're going in that direction. And I guess I should just like to elucidate that Chandong Shambrod is one of the companies in the area, but he's actually not one of the biggest companies there by a very long way. Their actual main industries are in agriculture and tourism, things that resonate really well with Clarence and make a great deal of sense for us to have discussions on. We're going there as a result of an invitation from the mayor of Binjau, not a company, but the, but the local government officials there. Because they see that it would be good to have a relationship with us. And we're going as a first step to analyze that and see whether that makes sense for us too. And I think it's appropriate that we, that we do that, not spurn their invitation, which is, Alderman Dows said, would be very helpful to turn down the invitation. I think it's important that we do go and we show appropriate respect.
Alderman Dows?
For you, Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to ask the general manager if he could, either funds are coming from for.
I'm, Mr. Mayor, there is an aggregation of funds that council sets aside in the budget each year for sister city relationships and also that council allocates each alderman a certain amount each year, which can be aggregated across several years for major conferences, sister city events and the like. So essentially those forming part of council's official delegation will be joint funded by both of those sources funding.
I'll just mention quickly, Mr. Mayor, so that actually means that the alderman's allowance will actually?
The, the, the actual travel allowance doesn't get part of your formal aldermanic allowance. It's ancillary to that. So it's, your alderman's allowance is something that is prescribed by statute, above and beyond that, council can give, provide allowances and support and test it. One of the supports that council provides and makes available to each alderman is an allowance of $2,000 per year for major conferences, sister city visits and the like. So that's the source of funding, the part of it. If that can be aggregated under council's policy across three financial years, the maximum of 6,000, anything not used in that period, million apps.
I think it's very important to state for the record too, that we're actually responding to a visit from the last year, the deputy mayor from Binjau came down here, an official visit, a civic visit. And that deputy mayor is now the mayor and he's responded by inviting us to reciprocate the visit. So it's in that context that it's a civic visit. It's also in the context, as Alderman Chong pointed out, that it's responding to business opportunities and as Alderman Dows pointed out as well, it's a matter of developing rec, respect between two civic communities. Are there any other speakers? Rodri Poy? Thank you, Alderman McFarlane.
I burrow down in my thinking as I am. And for me, the Kangaroo Bay development.
And for me, the Kangaroo Bay development gave us an opportunity to look at providing educational opportunities. For me, that's what part of the decision-making was. So within that context, I saw it as a part of, a way of us expanding the educational facilities in Clarence to an external body. And then, when we look at that, parents want to be suitably educated about where they're sending their children to. So if we look at long-term educational and tourism opportunities coming out by the development of Kangaroo Bay, the long-term interaction between us and Binjao is the key to expanding on anything that happens. The development application might have been approved, it may well, there could be some reason why it didn't get up. But in the long run, this particular step from their business community is exceptional, from my own view. And I believe, like with the sister city relationship we have with the KESI, that we have got a two-way sharing opportunity for the future. If I was a parent living in a country and sending my children so far away, I would want to have some kind of belief that the situations they were going into were not only formally responsible, but also acknowledged the need for those students to be cared for in our community. I look forward to, in the future, being able to expand on those educational opportunities, because that's what town's mainly is known for.
The motion is that council notes the make-up of the group and the timing of the delegation. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Item 12 is Alderman's question time. There are no matters on notice, questions without notice. Alderman Bonbert, we start with you, please.
Mayor, through you to the general manager, have we actually had a briefing, aware of it, in relation to a meeting between yourself and the police in relation to the Dope Creek?
Certainly haven't had a workshop about it, but I thought Mr Graham issued a briefing note in respect of that. I'll check on that tomorrow and make sure that if you haven't got it, it's re-issued. But there was a summary note came out from Mr Graham, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I was going to raise this on Thursday with probably Mr Graham, but the question is, can we do something about the parking at Kangaroo Bay? We've got a car parked there, which is very good, but it's only, it's not well signed, and I wonder, should we use the word free parking? Because there's a lot of cars parking there for a hell of a lot of long hours, and I think a lot of catching the bus to town. So can something be done to make sure that that parking is more highlighted? That's in the cage.
Mayor, council has resolved that we're a temporary gravel car park in there too, so that should be proceeding in the next few weeks.
Alderman Dowes? Alderman Kusick?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Just the old perennial, we're going here straight. Mr Gentleman, did you just, some weeks ago, there might be further traffic assessment study?
Through you, Mr Mayor, we've done additional traffic counts, and we'll be reporting them back to council via a briefing report or a report of some nature in the next... Okay, we'll follow up on that one, but yes, just for the record, I think the traffic counts we've undertaken have shown that the traffic numbers through there are actually first.
There. Alderman Jones?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Alderman McFarlane?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I was late due to the fact that there was yet another car parked in the station. And this time, we had the fire brigade from Clarence Station, and so that gentleman hadn't met me before. So I heard about South Arm speed problems, etcetera.
The question is?
Question is, with regard to the report being put forward, could I ask through the relevant staff member, what priorities are going to come forward out of that report?
Well, that will obviously be subject to whatever council determines in respect of the report, the priorities will be. But essentially, the issues to be covered, Mr Graham will correct you if I admit any here, are issues in relation to the landowners providing delegated authority to the police in respect of trespass, issues for council in relation to putting immovable barriers at certain points, key access points to the land in question. And thirdly, sorry, thirdly, a clean-up of the creek and the vehicles. And fourthly, a police advisor, increased police presence in the area in particular, if they can get the no trespass approvals and authorisations from the landowners. Would you leave any out there?
Second question in relation to that is, will we have to wait to initiate any action for budget allocation? Or can we initiate some works now?
Council can approve works ex budget, subject to a motion modifying the budget. But we may have funds within the budget. I'd like, before I sort of delve into that, I'd like to await the report coming forward. Actually, it is listed for discussion at a council workshop, I think, next week.
Firstly, I had a stressing call from a gentleman in Carrier Road, Rizendale, making a comment that there's very little activity in relation to when the street sweeper will be out in that area.
So last time, it was about three months ago. I'll have to advise that one through the briefing report, I'm sure Rosalind knows the... I think he does. Unless you pre-warn him, it should be, sorry.
Briefing report, actually, last week, I certainly approved the briefing. Last time when I'm there was just before Christmas.
Excellent. Good. And second question is in relation to the Lord of Dale footpath remedial program. I question through you to Mr Graham, in his capacity as asset manager. Mr Graham, Mr Gorrich, who's well-known to both of us. When will work commence in Bengali and those streets that were designated for footpath remedial work in February of last year?
Bengali Street?
We've got a list of all the streets, two pages long.
All right. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the closed meeting. Need now motions, please. Alderman Dowes, thank you. Second to Alderman McFarlane. All those in favour? Carried unanimously.